June 6, 2024, 6:00 PM. City Commission Workshop regarding the city charter.
Uh, everyone, if anyone would like to speak at this meeting, please do today. Uh, we don't have the, uh, the blue sets. Of course, you should be there, Brian. Anyone else that would like to speak?
I would have to see first. It's, uh, Wednesday, Thursday, after the election, also the second, not all the time. So we would have to have a meeting, and so that should be the first meeting. Can I say the first meeting? You said the first one, right? We can call it special meeting. What is the status of this?
All right, everyone, let us begin our meeting at six o'clock, man. The meeting will be called to order. Ceremonial amendments. After our discussion last month, I think that we would, if you would stand and have a moment of silence. And to also, if you have prayers, Commissioner Donata's husband had a medical challenge yesterday. She won't be here tonight, so keep her in her prayers, those that do.
Also, while we're having a moment of silence, remember those that gave for our freedom at the Normandy on June 6, 1944. Thank you.
And since we're in that mode, I also understand that Janet Shae was passed last week.
Sunday night.
Her funeral will be on next Saturday, and the, uh, and the wake will be on Friday. I don't have the time, so we'll probably get it by then. The wake will be at Greater Union First Baptist Church, Ascended Land. And the funeral will be at the New Hope Baptist Church. And also, one of her nephews died also, so a lot of things happened. Amen. By letting us say these things, ladies and gentlemen, we pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in heaven, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for coming out.
This is our first meeting that we did not do. That we have changed into the moment of silence. June 6, 2024.
We have the workshop, and the workshop is the charter review. And, uh, let the administrator open it up, and we'll take the conversation from there.
Well, Mayor, I can add a lot to say on this. We've put in here the current charter, and we put in the results from the charter of the new committee, I think, from 2019. Kind of leaves that up to you guys to discuss. I understand that was a piece of that taken from voters last time involving terms that didn't pass.
There were three sections last time. One was the administrator. The administrator actually tied it to another section off. People may have, so it does go.
I wasn't here, he wasn't here. Scott, could you give us a rundown as to what was the circumstances?
Um, you know, I didn't know if I can read what we did before. I know we have done, I think, two charter amendments since I've been in the term, so to say since 2016. One was a total rewrite of the charter, a brand-new charter. That did not pass. And then the last one, I believe, we took individual questions for main topics. Because when you do a charter, you give, uh, submit charter amendments to voters. You have to have a ballot tightly, you have to have a summary, and then a question. So in each, you can, the first time we did it, we started having a whole bunch of questions on each individual change. Let's just say here's a recharter for that pick. Then we tried to group, if I remember correctly, things into topics to address, into three topics. And that was in 2019, if I remember correctly, 2019. But we kind of broke it up, that didn't pass either. So I don't know the topic of discussion, as I briefly saw Roger put out. There's, for sure, without a doubt, there's conflicting language in our charter about when we have elections. And, you know, there's places say we only have manual elections, there's places say that we only have outdoor elections, and there are places that say we have even an outdoor election. We actually have an election every year. So of all the things, I think, that needs to be cleared up. Roger took a stab at it, his language, along with, you know, a lot of jurisdictions. When you look at, you know, this last election, it was, we kind of had an anomaly, but Lynn was uncharted. And so once the ball finally ended, she was commissioner-elect. And that was probably in the end of June.
August.
Oh, no, she didn't, when was, when was qualifying?
October.
Uh, June, something like that. I mean, she was commissioner-elect then. Then we had to re-initially pre-people run for mayor. And before, after the ballot was prepared, their lane, the incumbent decided not to seek reelection. That left us with two. Having had only two before the ballot was prepared, we would have just had a November election. But because it was already on the ballot with three, we had it in a primary timeframe. And then you won, so there was one, two people go, you won that. And then there were questions of, well, when do people take office? And, you know, term of office, you have two-year terms. And whether it's two-year terms, three-year terms, four-year terms, they start and stop. And I've never seen anybody in jurisdiction or any, whether state, local, federal, the terms start and stop on the same, basically. It doesn't matter when the person becomes elected, it's when they get sworn in, that's when the term starts. Otherwise, what you would have is you would have terms of office that may be two years, maybe a year and two, eight months, maybe a year and six months, maybe a year and four months, or two years and four months. It would just depend on when the next person became elected. So I know there's been some discussion about that. Could we have a floating term where as soon as the person was elected, deemed elected, they would take office? I think we could do that, but I think it would be kind of a record-keeping issue. Because you'd have to, not everybody starts and stops on the same, that meeting acted in November. Now, the next issue that we had, and, you know, I think some people just, a lot of jurisdictions, what they do is they say, the first meeting following the election, the new members, newly-elected individuals who are sworn in. That's common verbiage. In Oak Hill, we actually, we have three dates. And our three dates are, the only one we can control, the election date, which is the first Tuesday after the first Monday. Look, the verbiage, everybody has that. What we have is an organizational meeting. Now, not all jurisdictions have an organizational meeting. Most organizations, jurisdictions just say, we're going to, the elected officials are going to take office at that first meeting following their election. In our case, we say, that's what our organizational meeting says. The organizational meeting is the newly-elected officials who are sworn in, and then vice mayor selected. That's what the purpose of the organizational meeting is. But that is the first Thursday following the first Monday after the election. I think historically, people just assumed that was the first meeting, commission meeting, after the election. Sometimes it is. Go get a calendar, sometime, this year, it will be. Last year, it wasn't. It actually was the third Thursday. It really just depends on what day the first day of November is. What day of the week does that fall on, and how is it going to fall? And then that makes a confusion. And how that kind of came up last year, and I think Jim shared the email, was if you remember, Mayor Lain sent out an email saying, I want to move the November meeting up to November 2nd or the 9th. And when I saw that email, I was concerned that we were moving the only meeting of November to before the election. And saying, you know, typically, people get sworn in at that first meeting after the election, and we were going to be moving that then to December. Now, people are already unhappy having to wait till November. You were elected in August, whatever it was. Lynn was deemed elected in June. I was like, it ain't gonna sit well, selling everybody, gotta wait a whole other month before you can take office. So I contacted Lain, I said, hey, this is the problem, I see what the mayor wants to do. And I was talking to him, I pulled up the charter, and I was reading. So, and that's what I said, we have an organizational meeting, let's see when this organizational meeting falls. And, you know, because he was moving the meeting from the 9th to the 7th. Well, the organizational meeting fell on the 16th. And thus, if you go back, you look at the emails, we ended up, I think, moving our regular meeting to coincide with the organizational meeting that was required, that's set by charter, and that's when it begins. So everything, we have one meeting. Maybe historically, that's been done, and everything, that's how it was done, and people just observed that, hey, it just happens to be that first commit, that commission meeting falls, and when we do it, and we have our second meeting, the second Thursday, the month of our regular meeting, that's when we always square the people in, so that must be what the charter says. It's not what the charter says. So it is clear in the charter when it's supposed to occur, but you do have to look at your calendar here. It's not going to coincide every year. So I think with Roger, I didn't let him do it, but he was proposing some language to try to clarify that up. And there's some things I would probably add to it, I've talked to Roger about while we're sitting here. If we're just going to focus on this election issue, I think we ought to clear up, make it clear that we don't have my annual elections, we don't have outdoor elections, we have every year elections. Clear that up, like, to make it crystal clear, when does the elected official take office? Just so there's no question.
I think in this case, it was also an anomaly that they had never had a, from my understanding, that they'd never had a primary win. And a primary win in Northfield were India race, then fifty-plus one would have made the race in the August primary.
I could have this one.
Yeah, so, but there's no language for that. There's no language.
Well, no, there's language, and it is clear. And it doesn't happen until November. You still don't get sworn in either. If you win, you take office. And this is the part where I was talking to Roger. You go to Section 5E, I think, of the charter?
Or you might be talking about, might be Section 11, but 5E is, is what I'm trying to push, also.
Yeah, 5E says, and this is where I could cause some confusion, I could be wrong, but a newly-elected mayor or city commissioner shall take office at the first regular city commission meeting following his or her election. Now, if you stop right there, you would say, hey, I want it in August, I want it re-sworn in September. Read the last few words, after taking oath of office. So the question is, when do you take oath of office? That takes you back to the organizational meeting, which says the oath of office is issued at the first Thursday following the first Monday after the regular election, not the primary election. So that ties it all back to, that's when we're going to have our swearing-in. And when we get sworn in, that's when you take office. So I think the charter is clear on that issue. If you have a calendar, you read all the provisions of the charter. Yeah, it would be nice to have it all in one section, and, you know, I would talk to Roger, I would just, do what others do, just do is say, look, at the first regular election or the first city commission meeting following the election, the results, that's when you get sworn in.
Well, as a result of the election being in August, what, even, even the thought that was going around that it should be, it should be the first meeting after the regularly, after the election. But what was brought by Mayor Lain was that would be Section 6A. The term of office for the terms of mayor, any city commission shall be two years. So the two years meant that if he were to, let's say, be elected to the position in August, it would be between two months, and that's going to be four months. These are things that kept, that popped.
That's what I'm saying, a floating term of office. You can go from anywhere from one year of eight months to two years, four months, is your term. Depending on when did you take office, when were you deemed elected, and when does the replacement or is deemed elected? So take Lynn's situation. If we say, hey, she was deemed elected in June, she took office in July. Now, say she doesn't run for the election next time, and there's two people running for her seat. No, I'm saying, if you go back to when you're deemed elected, which you're talking about. She would have taken office in July. She's no different than you were. You were elected, she was by the law, became commissioner, because no one recognized her. But what? She was the winner as of, you know, end of July, and then the ball dropped. Could have been, could have been June.
And then the past, whatever.
But, 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 sure. If next election, Lynn doesn't run for her seat, so two people run for her seat, and they go into November, well, Lynn will have served two years, four months. Because two years leave July to July, because she also served August, September, October, November. So you got those additional months where it could be longer, or you could switch it around where, like with Mayor Lain's situation. He decided not to run for reelection. You was in August. You're going to have to cut this two-year term short, because now you won in August. If that's what we were going to do, you know, that's, that is a, you take office as soon as you are deemed elected.
I think one of the other things that had not come up on the radar, I'd say, that there have been a number of elections, which I've involved with, where there was no opponent. So because there was no opponent, when you file your paperwork in June, you know that you were going to be either reelected. But I guess the same thing would hold true if someone, if the commissioner was not going to run, and only, like in Donata's case, that's her kids, right? That there was nobody running in that city, and she put in for it, so all the time people ran.
If, say, the next time her seat comes available, she's the one applies again. Yes, she is deemed elected when the ball finally ends and she has no person opposed her. But her term, if she's currently serving, is not until November, so her new term of two years will start in November. So that's.
I guess where I'm at is that it's, we haven't had that happen, so we didn't have to deal with it. Now that it's happened, can't we make it a little bit more wordy, so it can kind of give what you're saying? Because the next person will be in that term, that's what you do. I mean, not that.
No, maybe, that's less word.
Less wordy?
It would be very, very, and less wordy to say, you will take office at the first city commission meeting following the general election, regardless of whether when you are deemed elected.
Well, see, that makes it a little bit more wordy, and it makes it a little bit more clearer. This is good, because you want it clear, this is not clear. This is up to, this is up to interpretation.
If you let me explain what my work, I think I'll answer a lot of the.
I missed the questions.
Okay. I've been working with Scott, I forget what it was, back in July or something.
Yeah.
We've been working on this back and forth, and he's got more highlighted stuff than I've got. But I concentrated on the biannual and two-year parts of everything to eliminate it. We had discussed 5E, and that's by Scott's recommendation, about just dropping that section completely, because it's repeated in other sections. On Section 11B, where it says, the newly-elected commissioners shall be installed, if elected, in the regular biannual election on the first Thursday after the first Monday following the regular biannual election, or so on. I proposed changing, eliminating the regular biannual, and putting in primary or general election. And then they would be, um, on the first meeting after, and eliminate first Monday following the regular biannual, and put in general election. That way, it specifies which election, the general election is the one that's always held in November. And you can be, you can be elected, like I said, if elected in the primary or general election, but you're not going to get sworn in until the gen, after the general election. And that would answer that, that problem of the point. Whether you want to include general or special meeting after the election, because, I think I would say the first commission meeting, because that might put it in the, if you say general election, it could.
You have your meetings on Thursday, it says one, once a month. You could look at November, the calendar, in January, the year of, you see where the election is. You could decide early in the year, or November meeting is going to be the third week. Yeah, the third Thursday or Tuesday, or, yeah, it can be any day of the week, and you're not tied to that date. So you've got flexibility in November, anything but Thanksgiving week unless it's early.
I know when I got elected on Tuesday, I had, let's see, Wednesday, the city clerk turned in a resignation, and the Thursday, I was swan in. Three things in a row.
We're not the, we're not the only people in the city that feels like this. I mean, in Holly Hill, they have meetings on the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. Now, sometimes the second Tuesday happens to coincide with the actual election day. So we can't square somebody in, because our meeting actually starts before the election results are done, so we have to wait till the fourth Tuesday to square them in. Other times, the second Tuesday is actually the Tuesday following the, maybe the election. And so we can do it on a personal meeting, you know, the second Tuesday, they have jurisdiction type of deals.
So certainly, we don't, if I, on this one thing, I think you said that there were certain conflicts within.
Sure.
Okay, now, maybe we should consider how we address the conflicts, that's just one.
Yeah.
And what way that we do it, do we have it with a charter review committee?
There's no reason to review something that's a clear conflict.
Okay, so now, what we have here is a summary of the charter revision.
Did Roger address for most of the conflicts?
I didn't speak to Roger about that side of it.
No, I don't see it, what he passed out, it is, I didn't get it to the other section.
Okay. Well, the question is, my understanding, just from my interpretation, is that normally whenever we, the charter that was put up for vote, it failed twice or three times?
Twice, I think.
Twice.
But there was, it was presented to the public two different ways. One was presented as a total new charter, here's a whole new charter for the city. Oh, we read it, the entire charter. Then I believe what we did with that in passing. So then we have another charter review, and I, in my recollection, is that I didn't fact it review it, but I know one of the, our chairman's here, so you can answer it.
I would definitely get to you on that, because that's my.
I think we kind of broke it up into topics, and presented it as topics, like areas to address. And that didn't pass, however.
My segue was to the chairman of the charter reviews, because he, I wasn't here. Is anyone else to see, would he, Roger, when he made that?
Yeah, I wasn't in the meeting.
But you were there when they made the election.
Wayne was one of the members of the charter.
Wayne and Todd, was he? It's a name that.
Wayne Bishop, and I was the chairperson of the last charter review committee, which was done in 2022. And we were tasked with doing the whole charter review and voting amendments, so I think we come up with that. Scott said, back in 2016, or between 2016 and 2018, they did a full charter rewrite. And that's what went to the public for a vote, and it was voted down by 41 votes, out of almost 800 votes. And so we reviewed that charter that was voted down the first time. We looked at that, and then the commission also wanted to see pieces of that broken out. And so they wanted us to submit two proposals to them. One was, okay, let's revise this charter here that we voted down before, which we just tweaked a little bit. The people that did that charter did a very good job. It addresses everything y'all are talking about here, and several other issues that need to be resolved within the city, to make this function more like a business, it should be. And they wanted to break it down, and unfortunately, they took the three items that we broke down for them, which was, one was determinants, they wanted to see four-year terms. And so that they could have an election every other year, and on the even, of the even number of years. They also wanted to see the city administrator at full authority to hire and fire and control all city employees. And the other part, I think, was to address the issues that Scott's been talking about here today, dealing with all the irregularities in the current charter, which there are numerous. So that was put down, but it was, to a very cumbersome, I think it was off, Roger, he, eventually, he didn't even support it the way that it was written. And between the three separate items to be voted on, and it was confusing. And I don't think it really fixed the entire charter, but it just added more work for Scott to try to get this in base, you know, it would go a lot back and forth. Whereas if we were to vote it on that other charter, and we tweaked at that time, give the citizens another opportunity to vote on that, they would have got everything done with that one document. But they chose to go the other way, and did not want to go that way. My proposal to y'all tonight, what I would like you to do is review that charter that did not get put to the voters last time, and let's get that thing back on the ballot in November. Because it addresses the issues that you're talking about right now for the deal with that, and it'll also deal with the city administration issues that you're having, and it'll also clear up all those irregularities in that current charter.
So do we have that, is this what this is?
I don't know if that's what I can get to, I have.
You can, and I can get it to you.
Okay. Why you and I did not support the changes?
I know, that's what I said, that's what I said, I said, you did not support the change, too, because it was all sudden done. So, and that's what, you know, so here, we spent, and we didn't just spend a whole lot, we did three months, we turned it around, and got everything to the city commission in plenty of time. But before this meeting, I asked Scott, he said, if the city commission gets serious about this, and maybe schedule another special meeting to get it done, if you can review that current document, and see if there's any way we can get this on the ballot in November, I think you're going to be leap years ahead of where you would be trying to just keep going back and forth with what we're talking about here now. Because that new charter will address all these issues, and get this city operating like a business.
Wait, that new charter that you're talking about, did that go to four-year terms, too?
It did. And that's the one issue, you know, I really think, that causes a lot of heartburn among the citizens. And I think there, what the conversation should be, you're going to have to have elections every two years. This odd even thing is a mess. So the option is going to be, if you don't go for four years, you're going to do two years. Everybody's hoping up for reelection every two years. And that's one of the reasons what they did back, way back when, in 2000 or 1999, whatever it was, when.
Everybody's going to vote it out.
Well, they did. But then they went, they created the mess you got now with all this verbiage, but they did it legislatively, and obviously didn't do a very good job, because it's still very darn confusing, so.
Was term limits in that, what meant you said that it didn't get presented?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, it did.
Four-year terms.
It was four-year.
Without term limits?
No, sir.
Without term limits.
It was four-year, it was, that particular document was for four years. And that's what was on the, you know, one of the three items that was being voted on, was for four-year terms also. I don't want to lose the opportunity to get this on the ballot, and give the citizens a chance to vote on this. If the four-year is a deal breaker, let's change that part, you know, two years? And if you have to replace the entire commission, if that's what the citizens want to do, give them that option. I think if, and again, I don't, I could go either way, but I know there's a lot of people out there that don't feel that way. They would rather see an opportunity every two years to vote for every vote, versus having stagnant. They would rather see an opportunity every two years to vote for every vote versus having stagnant terms and having four-year terms.
But what about staggered terms, election every year? That's what we currently have.
Yeah.
That's what we currently have.
That's what's currently happening. You have an election every year.
And then two, and then three, and then two.
But that's not the way that charter is set up. That's not the verbiage in that charter now. You have to go back and do it.
Are you talking about the, when do you all?
The one that we presented to the city commission back in 2022.
When I was with the city of Oakville, they went through this, everything evolving from two-year, three-year. And the trouble was, was getting beat with the vote for a longer term.
Right.
They added term limits in mass. So a commissioner or mayor can only serve two terms, total of eight years. And it failed until there were term limits that were put in. Now, I don't know, each community has got its own politics in its own field, but that's how they got that, the terms done. Because that same thing was an election every year, every year.
Well, Holly Hill did the same thing. We go from two-year to four-years, but they put the term limit only on the office of mayor. And so what, and it's not a term limit like the president where it's two years and you can never ever go for office again. You know, in Holly Hill, you know, we've got a mayor serve eight years or two four-year terms. And then when his term was up, he ran for this seat instead of mayor, his own seat. Got elected, served eight years there, run for mayor. So you can do that. And it's not like the president where you only have two terms and you can never run again.
But I wasn't on the commission at that time, but I do remember the charter review came up. And that was an issue in terms of four-year term, but they did not have term limits. And I think I was more in favor of having the both of them.
A four-year term or term?
With a term limit, because the term limit, I mean, I ran six times. It don't make no sense. I'm just saying.
Well, I think that, that would probably be a simple task for, to be done with that current charter. To add that in there and keep it at four years. But either way, whether you want it for four years or two years or put term limits in, it's not going to take a lot of effort to get that current document that you guys had in your possession on the ballot in November.
A tweak here.
Yes.
Todd, you, you were on the review?
Yes.
Could you give us your opinion?
Well, Todd Preston, 352 Connecticut Avenue. I was on that review committee and I concur with everything Mr. Bishop said. I agree with him. The only thing I would add is the demographic of Lake County is slowly changing, but there's still a lot of resistance to four-year terms. So you can add, keep that in there or add that in there and roll the dice and be back to square one. Or maybe you'll garner those 41 votes this time or 42 votes. But it's a big sticking point with still a lot of people. Because it's a small town, you know, we're divided up into zones and people don't want to make a commitment, you know, until they realize that they like somebody that they've elected to the seat. So I think you're going to have an uphill battle still if you try to go to the four-year terms. Perhaps, you know, a two-year, a two-term consecutive limit might convince people otherwise. But I, I just would argue that there's still a lot of resistance to it, of the people.
Other than that, the charter.
I think it's more of this.
I think it, I agree with Mr. Bishop, but I think you can do that again so you can't push that through and leave it on the ballot.
Of course, I don't have a reason for me to press on, but the, Scott, if charter review can be, terms be voted on separately, as it has to be at all times?
No, you could, you could present, you could present however you want. You really could. You could say, here's a new, new provision, and then we're going to do, here is a new charter, and then we're addressing the terms separately or term limits separately. But you have the question of what happens if the new charter doesn't pass, but these other provisions do pass? So you gotta, you gotta think of that a couple ways, like three ways. If both pass, but only one or the other passes, how does that impact the charter?
The only other thing I'll say on the access, I think you really want to have one question on the ballot. Because when you start, I think that's one of the problems with the last one, having three issues that they had to vote on. Just made it a little confusing. And what I want to say here right now is, the entire commission has to be on board with whatever y'all decide on. Because we have this discussion in our, in our charter review meetings. It's going to take each and every one of us to get out there and educate the folks as to why this charter, this charter needs to be approved. I don't know how much effort was put into it back in 2018. I know the folks that were on there and they did a good job. I can say that. That document is, I think is a really good document.
The purpose, the purpose is you can advocate. You can educate.
Educate, yes, you said, yeah, but you, but you gotta, you still need all, you gotta be on the same page when you, when you approve this thing. And so when, so when you're educating, you're, you're teaching the same lesson. So if we go out there with mixed lessons, then it's never going to get done.
Citizens can advocate though. They're not bound by those rules.
Right.
And that happened last time with four-year terms, because there was a lot of advocating proposed.
Do you think the four-year terms is looking at a power grab by the current commission? And if we set it up, the four-year terms didn't take effect until after the next election? And not, it wouldn't, in fact, current terms of office, it would be the people who were elected next. Do you think that would be more powerful or not?
Yeah.
I think so. That, that was one of the reasons why most of the people I talked to were against it. Is that they thought it was a power grab to extend to people that are currently in office.
You have to face reelection to get the new four.
Yeah. I don't, I don't want to see that provision. I didn't want to see it the last time either. To be honest with you, the four-year term. So if that's not something that we even want to do, then let's just drop that. And go with what Mr. Bishop suggested.
Legislative session last time, they had an issue where they were bringing up on charter personnel. If the commissioner, if the new commissioner was elected within six months of a contract for a charter personnel, they weren't allowed to vote on that because they were too close to being elected in that. So if you look at our elections, every one of us each year are within six months. There's always some, especially here when there's three of them, you're not, you're not going to get to the jury. You're only going to get two votes. And then on the other, you know, it's either going to be three votes or two votes, depending on what year the charter or the contract comes up for review or whatever. So that issue would be resolved as we went to four-year terms. But that issue failed in the last legislative session that I know of. So it might come up again. And if the legislation forces that upon us, that's another issue that we have to look at.
I think the purpose behind that legislation was to prevent incumbents from executing a sweetheart deal with the current administrator, manager, charter officer, that then tied the hands of newly elected people to get on it. So they kind of put that six months, within six months of the election, you can't, you can't change the charter.
I think it makes the most sense that we go with what was already in front of, just as you said, Mr. Bishop. And Mr. Preston both have great suggestions. That document was great. People liked it, almost passed through. The four-year terms seem to be a sticking point. Take that off. And if, if, you know, next time we all want to put that back in, go back before it. But at least we can get a language bring up and a document that makes sense when we create it to people. And I don't see why we don't, we already done the work.
That's what I'm saying. We've already got a lot of effort into putting that document.
It's not really that.
You don't need to.
So we have to do another, say, a workshop to, because I have never seen that document.
I'm not, I mean, we would be in another workshop for two.
To read.
All of it's a special meeting so that if you wanted to change it from four-year to two-year term, you could make that in that motion at that session to correct if that was the one change that we made.
What, what is the timetable in terms of being able to get to the board of elections with all of the worded?
The end of July.
So we gotta do this by the end of July to get it on the ballot or?
You might have to like August 10th. I'm just basing, like I said, on the city of Oak Hill is doing a charter review. And they asked us to relook, and but they, their meeting is the second and fourth Monday. So their Monday, just the second Monday of the month, just made it by the day. But if you had to get it to the supervisor the next day, us being the second Thursday, maybe two or past that. So, and I know in Oak Hill, we said, let's begin on having everything approved in July. We're going to have plenty of time. We've got updates to the supervisor.
It would be probably a good thing if we contacted Lewis and we give her heads up on what we're trying to do. On exactly what her timeframes are.
Yeah, I agree with that. Whatever.
And I also think that we should be doing baby steps like Wayne said. Instead of going for all the changes, just take one issue and address the one issue before the people. Take the baby steps and make sure the people will be more apt to go for it instead of, because you can concentrate more on that one issue instead of confusing with a bunch of other issues.
Well, you know, you're talking about just this election, I mean, the terms, whether it's two years or four years.
Because that would change, if we change, if we go for change in a term, it's also going to change these other sections.
Yeah, I mean, but it's all related to what's going on as far as when you're going to be, when you start your term. How many term, whether it's two years or four years.
The things that have to happen to what you guys proposed.
What's in there. You're right now, it's four years for staggered terms. If you go to two years, you're going to figure out, if you go to two years, it's going to be all five every two years or you're going to have to have an election every year. That's the two-year.
That's an easy change. And then you're proposing it in charter? That's an easy question. Just changing what Roger, that's just going to take a little more work. And only because they've already done that, that ordinance is done, that document is done. All you got to change is four to two, maybe a little other tweaks, and change the date of the ordinance, it's done. This is going to take a little more work. And I say it can't be done. We're going to have to go through and just pick out the things that refer to when you take office, the organizational meeting, biannual, odd number, even number election, all that stuff, we need to make sure we pull it up. That's all come out in the document, they did along with other changes, because we just rewrote a lot of stuff. What Roger says, take our current charter and pick some things out of it and change it just to address the things that are truly uncomfortable, which are the, they need to clarify, and those are the, you know. When do we have our elections? When do you take office?
What do you say is option, not options, opponents to the two-year elections are that by having an election every year, we're paying for it as opposed to, it's costing the city money. In other words, whenever we take a two-year election every two years, then that money is coming out of our, our, our kids.
Close money now.
Exactly. So if we were tied to, and I'm just giving what was the, the arguments at the time that I was on the commissions, the things that were being brought up, was that the four-year term would coincide with the general election or, or governor's election, and that would be an expense that we did not have to pay. The other things that would come up with regards to the election is that two-year election, by the time you get into this, you see, you're about ready to take another, go through another campaign.
Yeah, that's one of the things I've always noticed is when you, when you take office in November, the budget you have for your first year, stuck by somebody else. Are in place. It wasn't, yeah, you have no say in that budget. So all the things you campaigned on, that's not in the budget because you didn't have anything to say over it. So by the time that you go through your first budget, everybody knows how this works. Learning how these budgets work and all this takes a little time. So you get through your first budget, and before your first budget is complete, you're campaigning against it. And people are saying, well, you can accomplish it. Well, what can I actually do? I only have, I'm halfway through my budget that I could actually live on. And you're telling me I didn't accomplish it? If anything, I always said, first time I left official again, in six years, you know, just slowly get used to it. And then you can do two years after that. But it, this is, there's a big learning curve. And nobody can catch on to this learning curve within two years. It's just not possible.
And that was one of the things that was also put up in the, in that meeting that the, the county had about our, our echo. They were referring to the transition of officials in our government that did not have the continuity. Because I was on those commissions and some of those controversies, there was not, there was no, I mean, it wasn't enough to speak of.
Well, I always say Holly Hill is a very good case study for that. Holly Hill always had two-year terms. And about every two years, they went through a city administrator, city manager. When they went to four-year terms, they had their first long-serving city manager. And then the next manager after them, Joe Porte, was the longest-serving city manager. Then they went to two-year terms. And Joe Porte worked for Central County as deputy manager. All of a sudden, we had about four or five managers within three or four years. We went back to four-year terms. Joe Porte came back, and he's been there for awful long time now. And so there, there's stability when you have four-year terms. Now, it doesn't mean you like, I'd remind the public, likes that stability, likes who's there, but you have stability. You don't have this rotating rule policy. You know, I've done this long enough to know that when you, and you've seen it, when you go through a change of administrator, manager, representative, call it, it's, there's downtime in the state. There's downtime leading up to the, you know, the separation with that manager. Then there's time, just like Jim asked you to be caught up. There's time that you're, you're just kind of keeping things steady while we're up, getting up to speed. And then it just takes time. There's downtime there. And, and if you go through a termination process, you go through the process of severance. You know, so that gets expensive. So there's a lot to be said about stability in having a stable commission and a stable administration where you're able to not have a turnover, turmoil, things like that.
And going back and as far back as I can remember is that every election, there has to be a hit person. And usually the city administrator. We had that with Don Fendell. We had that with Jason. We had it with, what's his name?
J.C.
J.C. Casey.
Casey.
With the, so every year, it always puts a bowtie on the back of the city administrator. That's just in my observation, whether it's good or bad, whether it's up or down. But your example that you just gave basically showed that the stability came with a four-year term. And you had less turnover with city administrators. You have less turnover with city administrators. You have a less starting all over from scratch. That's, that's something that goes with the territory. So.
But this, this latest charter also addresses, is more definitive in the separation of the roles of the city commission from mayor and the city administrator. Right now, there's still a lot of gray areas in the way that city, the way the current charter is set up. That's another reason why this thing is very important to get passed.
Does everybody understand, does everybody know how our current charter handles this?
Not that story?
That's so important.
But there's a presentation I did, and I went through the whole city's charter, history of our charter. And it was on tape, and it's here in the city. There's a book somewhere in the city. Let me find it, because it was here at the polling meeting. And I would recommend if I want to know what cur, when in our charter, you could go over that. Do they have to do that?
Remember, I wrote an article about it. The article that I got information from, from Don Fendell, and the idea, this was the story that I was given, is that the state charter system requires municipalities become more professional in their governance. And as a result of that,
And as a result of that, Mom and Pop had a good old boys situation, they wanted us to upgrade.
Mayor.
Uh, mayor.
Then mayor.
So what, what they did, the city at that time was ran by a city commission, and the commissions, commissioners were commissioned over various entities. You had the sheriff, or the marshal, you had fire, you had city hall, so East Commission had their own little chiefdom. When you were going to come up with a city manager, then the city manager would then be rolling all of that into that position. And because of that, not being able to advocate, it passed by a very small margin to get on the ballot. And not to say that all the commissioners were in favor of it, but when it did get to the ballot, it failed by a very small number, I won't say forty-one votes, but it was close.
I don't believe that was the case for the one you're talking about back in two thousand. That one, I think, failed by.
The one that, the one that hired Fendell.
Yeah, Fendell was already hired when they took that, but if that, that one failed, I'm not gonna, I don't know the exact number either, because it's not forty-one votes, it was considerably more. And that was based on personalities.
Exactly.
So the whole reason why that one failed was because of the personalities in place. And that's what we gotta try to get passed now, and I think we have an opportunity here where the personalities are, whether you love or hate them, as far as the commission's concerned, but the city administrator is due. So we got a chance here to get this thing through without the city administrator having a knife or gun pointed at him come election time. But that, what they did when that one failed back in two thousand, is they basically took what failed and went to Tallahassee and did it through the legislature. Everything that was voted down ended up getting done. And that was one of the reasons I had a problem with the way that they separated it, so last time we were going to present it, because basically they threw the legislation thing, and here we go, we come back to Tallahassee, even with Scott giving his word that that was not gonna happen, but it still could have opened the door that had it happen. So why not vote on a document that tells everybody exactly what it is and then be done with it, instead of trying to keep fixing something that should have never been in place to begin with? Because that's what happened back in two thousand.
I'm glad you, you brought that in, because what was, what was the story, the short end of the story was that as it failed, then what the option was is that they would come up with the idea that if you created something like a city administrator, then you could control it, so if you create the manager, the manager would then take over these commission seats. So whatever, however they got to that place, the intent was to be able to give the commission oversight to the city administrator. So they created the city administrator, because they were going for a city manager, and that's what everybody did not want. So what, what they did in order to keep Tallahassee happy, is that they came up with something that would give the city commission, the city administrator serves as the pleasure of the commission, not as he's an independent, goes on his own. And that's what gives us as the commission oversight, and we didn't even give the city administrator the ability to hire or fire until they had to create a bus cafe, and then they were hiring busboys, and, and they couldn't get rid of the busboys, they had some.
And that's a major part of what's wrong with the current.
Definitely.
There's no doubt about it.
Not joking.
I mean, it's just so inadequate that it's just no way to run this thing. And I've been saying that for the last twenty-four years, ever since we did what we did. I wish that first we would have passed back then, but they didn't, but what they went and did after that was not right either.
They corrected problems.
They should have gone back every two years until it was presented in a way where the citizens would have had their voice heard, and it would eventually not pass. That's what was a little aggravating about the one that lost by forty-one votes. If you come back two years later and spend a little bit more time educating people, not endorsing or advocating, like I said, but education, eventually it would have passed. And that's where I'm at today, because I think, you know, let's.
Take what we got.
Tweak what you got a little bit, figure out what you want to do with those terms. I mean, like Todd said, there probably is a lot of resistance out there for four years, whether they're looking at it from a power grab or, or whatever else they perceive it as, you know, it's still not powerful to a lot of people. But again, whether we live in this four years for the term limits, and get out there and just try to educate the folks as to why this needs to be done.
Question I have, Wayne, do you have that document?
Yes.
Do we have that document?
Yes, you do.
So then we need to get that document, this is just a workshop, so not maybe any decisions, but as, as a point of.
Sure, please. Would you like that document put on the next commission agenda for next year?
Commissioners?
I don't think we need to have a crew or receive a document on the commission meeting.
Why don't we get something you don't want?
I mean, it would, it would help us in our education on correcting these issues, that this is just a start with, so, that's what I'm talking for everybody, it would help. So just emailing us a copy of it would be.
Helpful.
Yeah, because commissioners and moderators.
Putting a copy in our box, depending on how thick it is.
Thirteen, thirteen bags.
Yes, I hear that.
Thirteen bags.
Oh man, what is that?
Make a print, make a printer.
It is single space.
So is, is, is that a consensus that?
Yes, we'll, we'll circulate it, we'll find it circulated, and we can go ahead, not, you know, we'll go ahead and get the ordinance ready for adoption, and present something to you.
That's the point.
Well, I don't know if it's gonna be on next commission's agenda for first reading, but if it's not on the agenda for first reading, then you're gonna have to have a special call meeting in July.
We'll get those dates from the election office.
So we'll have that next meeting, have a first reading, having the documents.
Maybe coming out of there, there may be some consensus on that.
Might have a special meeting.
For the first reading, and then the second reading could be in July.
So a special meeting could be situated between the regular meeting, the special meeting, so that we can be compliant to be able to get to the point of it.
Or we, we can have the July meeting be the first reading, and then the following week or two have that be the second reading.
Does it have to be ten days in a row?
I would like to take, if you sign up, we here have got your name here, put your name underneath, you're the fourth one.
You're not a fellow.
Okay, Wayne, you've already spoken, is there anything else you want to add? Todd, you've already spoken, anything you'd like to add?
I'd like to add one more thing, please.
Yes, sir.
Part of the problem, I think, with the four-year terms is tied to turmoil. And over the last, I don't know, ten years or so, there's been a lot of turmoil on the commission and a lot of change. And I think that the city needs some cohesion, and we need to see people that are getting re-elected to their seats, and commissioners together, and moving past what's happened in the past. You've got a new, you've got a new administrator, I think we have a good group of people here, and if you work together and show some solid cohesion and seem like a responsible body, whole to the people, I think eventually they might be more amenable to going to four-year terms. But that, to me, is what's been hampering it, you know, up to this point, so I would encourage you to, to work together and pay attention to that, and that's it.
Thank you. Kelly?
Kelly, six one six John Street. I think it's much more difficult to remove a commissioner from their seat rather than being re-elected if they're doing a good job. I don't see four-year terms, it's harder to get removed, a commissioner or mayor, at that point, I think that if you are doing a great job and the community still trusts you, they will vote you back in. Thank you.
Ron?
Yeah, off that topic there, how many terms have you served?
I'm in my second.
Second. Roger?
I think this is my second.
Second? Well, apparently you're doing a good job.
I'm going in some, well, there is, people will vote for me.
Well, you're doing a good job, and that's what we're saying, is people think, if you don't do a good job, you're gonna be out of there. And there's plenty of people, especially with social media, that can get you voted out. So you, that's, your, your fear is your fire to do a good job. And I'm not quite understanding, I came here tonight because this has been voted out twice. I think if you're insulting to people, just try and, just try to wiggle this back in. It's, it's, you know, I did not think, I think what we got isn't broken, don't fix it. If you want to change the order of them, because you had a problem of not being the mayor the day after you were elected. It was clear, it was clearly our attorney, that said, this is how it reads, but now if you want to carry that up, oh, words, yeah, but don't, don't sneak in that and then say, the city administrator, we're gonna give him powers to do, do this. That's where you're gonna turn it down twice. Don't keep on trying and trying and trying, that's an insult to your, your people.
Well, just, just to respond only on one small point, this is probably the best transition any mayor could have had, or city commissioner, the transition meaning, being a mayor-elect and not be in conflict with the current mayor, because he's not going to be on the commission. So I learned a lot, and the opportunity to make that time, is probably a transition that we will never have again. But as far as I was, I was not in a hurry to get here, trust me. When they were telling me I would be elected, I should be sworn in in September, that wasn't part of my agenda. So no, I'm not trying to be there for that. But I've been on the commission long enough to seen enough, to have seen enough things that want to make this better, not to keep it personal. And I think some of the things that we do should not be as personal as they are. If you do the job, if you're not doing the job, that is the advantage of having your vote. Your vote is what puts you in or out. Not that it's hard to get you out. If you break the law, there's enough things that can get you out of it. If you don't become electable, it just takes an election. So I, I, I believe in the process, I have no problem with the process, so, that, I'm sorry, just to respond.
We'll just run our charter, and if they vote, don't fix it.
Thank you, Todd. Cookie?
Well, it was a couple of years ago when I was a commissioner, and believe it or not, in all the years, right, we've come up on this two years to four years many, many times, and it has, just like that gentleman, here's the type of gentleman, that it always ended up the same way, is two-year term. And the biggest thing is, that I could see, Wayne, is if we could turn around, lead the two-year term, I'm gonna have two, lead the two-year term, and go ahead on what, I mean, you've come to some good things here that should be changed, and go ahead and change all that, and then lead the two-year term for now. That's all I'm saying.
That's the commission's fault.
We have, we have to vote him on these changes, like Scott says, there's a lot of things that are backing each other up and everything else. And we do, yes.
Again, there, I don't want to get into that to make you see, but if the commission decides to move forward with that current charter, that we put four people back two years ago, and they want to go to a two-year term, that's fine, that's what needs to happen, but they, like Todd was saying, this group needs to be cohesive, they need to be all together to get this thing, so that they can educate why we're doing it this way.
Well, my point is, you have the right ideas, and where we should go with all this other stuff. The only thing I got is, is all these years being involved, with this being commissioner and everything else, it always was, whenever we talked about four years, it was always two years. And if you're good, like that gentleman, another gentleman, is that if you're good and you're doing your job, then there's no reason why, if you want to be, if you want to run for election again, then David, if you're doing a good job and everything is going good, then they should vote for you to stay in there, if you want, but you have a choice that way.
Thank you. I just also like to add is that the demographics of our town is changing, the population is shifting, there's a, there's a younger generation coming in, some of us old hats.
Hey, hey, watch that.
But it, it is statistically, is statistically proven the fact that there are a lot of seniors that are leading the city, and as those seniors lead, new groups are coming in. Whatever happened upon, what is that, what was it planned or doing with the possibility of live local three hundred and forty-eight units coming in, they come in with a, what do you call it, senior living facility, each one of those individuals has a vote. So I think we need to be able to have a forward look as opposed to always looking backwards. Everything that happened yesterday is not gonna happen again, it may happen again because everything that repeats itself, so that's just my closing.
Don't forget one thing, I always get along with Don.
Thanks, yeah. Well.
So, so. How long does that happen? How long does that happen?
Yeah, and to summarize, then, so we'll get a copy of what was proposed. So you can discuss it on the third date. If you want to make a change to that from four-year to two-year or anything else, you've got that ability to give the direction to the city attorney in terms of draft and the ordinance, and then we can turn around, we'll have the dates from the county for election-wise, so then we know whether or not the first read would be July or special reading in midday, just so that we can have it all done by the deadline, if you decide to move on.
But if we stay with the two.
I'm in agreement.
If we stay with the two, two years, we're not gonna change that. As far as that.
No, because it says four years.
If that one didn't sell.
That would have been a failure.
But that has, I'm sorry.
May I add a thing or something?
Yes, go ahead.
I don't think the new demographics or any change with that demographics should have any bearing on two-year or four-year. I mean, that's not gonna change who people see are doing a good job.
Well, what I'm saying is, is that there's gonna be different people gonna be looking at this position as well as our city commission. The same people that were ten years ago, it's a lot changed. So I'm just putting it out there, not to say that that's gonna make a big difference, but the point is, is that it is, it is part of our reality in this city, whether or not it makes it, whether or not the election changes or not, doesn't matter. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. On that note, I think we're finished, we went out. All right? Meeting adjourned.
I'm gonna write this date on the calendar.